Say if you're up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome, y'all, to this board meeting. And we always try to start off with an invocation. Craig, would you do that?
I'll be doing it, too.
Please, y'all, keep in your hearts those people that have the tornado in Alabama and Georgia.
That's great. Father, once again, we acknowledge your presence here with us today. We thank you for being here, Lord. Thank you for your Spirit among us. I pray, Father, that the Spirit of brotherhood would be readily apparent, that, Father, that we would find ways to accommodate one another, or that we would figure out ways that are in keeping with your will to promote the interests of Rankin County, to make this place an even better place to live, Father. Thank you for the privilege that we have to serve our government, Lord, to come together to participate in government. Thank you, Lord, that we cannot take that for granted, and that we know that it is a gift from you. Thank you for our first responders, especially those who are responding, Lord, to emergencies in places in Alabama and Georgia. Lord, I pray for their protection, their safety. I pray, Father, that you'll return them home to their families in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. All right, this meeting is called to order. We'll go first to our public comments and recognition. And we have a big group here, Richland High School Boys Soccer Team. Jared, you and Craig take over.
With your permission, Mr. President, and Jared, on your behalf as well, we want to take the time to recognize the Richland High School Rangers Soccer Team. I see a bunch of faces out here that look like they belong to the Richland Soccer Team. I'm going to read this resolution. First of all, we want to say congratulations to you on winning your state championship, Class 4A Soccer State Championship, and so this board...
Put in there, "first time ever."
First time ever.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Put Richland on the map.
So I'm going to read a resolution that's been prepared to recognize the team and coaches. Coach Adams, if you'll come forward, please, go ahead and take your place right up here at the front. I'm going to make you be the recipient of the award on behalf of the team. But we're going to recognize all the guys. Guys, at some point when I'm reading the resolution, I'm going to call your name out. I'm going to do my best to make all of the pronunciations accurately. I have a feeling that I won't do, I won't get it 100% accurate, but if you think you recognize the name that I've called out and it's your name, would you please come forward when you hear your name called, okay? This is a resolution recognizing, congratulating the Richland High School Rangers Soccer Team on their 2019 MHSAA Class 4A State Championship, whereas the Richland High School Rangers Soccer Team won the 2019 Mississippi High School Athletic Association Class 4A Soccer State Championship by defeating West Lauderdale High School 2-1 in the state championship game. And whereas the Rangers finished the season with a record of 11, 7, and 4, and during the season, the Rangers secured the District 6, Region 5, Class 4A Championship and the Class 4A South State Championship. Whereas the most important, get this, guys, the most important statistic compiled by the Rangers is the team's combined grade point average, which stands at 3.52 out of 4.0. Congratulations, gentlemen, on your academic success as much as your athletic success. And whereas the members of the 2019 Richland High School Soccer Team are seniors Eduardo Ariano, did I get that close? Come on. Come on, Eduardo. Desmond McElroy. Arvin Rivera. Gregory Anderson. Our juniors are Gabe Denham. Billy Gabara. Alan Gutierrez. Ruben Harris. Wilmer Martinez. Lane Memes.
Stop chief.
Gerardo. Gerardo Paredes. Hagan Roberts. And our sophomores are Matt Taylor. Actually, that's the only sophomore one. We've got a bunch of freshmen. Cameron Allison. Logan Bynum. Jacob Young. Is it Ajari Fairley? Gerardo Hernandez. Alexander Mariano. And Nathan Smith. We've got an eighth grader, Jamison Miller. Okay? And we have a manager, David Estrada. Did David make it up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good deal. Whereas the Rangers are led by head coach John Adams, and the faculty and staff and administration of Richland High School are to be commended for their outstanding commitment to both academic and athletic success. Therefore, it is resolved by the Board of Supervisors from Rankin County, we are commending you and congratulating you, the members of the Richland High School Rangers Soccer Team, the coaching staff, and the administrative leadership, for their champion championship 2019 season. On behalf of all citizens of Rankin County, we extend our best wishes for continued success on and off the soccer field. Gentlemen, congratulations on winning the state championship. Now, at this time, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Jared Morrison. He has one additional presentation to make.
I do. I'll tell you, guys, I'm really proud of you. Like I said earlier, you know, we hear a lot about the bigger schools in the county that accomplish things, and it's so good that you see the smaller schools like yourselves and Florence and the Piscers and Puckets do these things, and it makes me really proud to be part of that community. I'm from Florence, and I've grown up in Florence, Richland, all my life. And, you know, I know y'all, your goal now is to raise money for your rings, and I know it's a pretty big ticket. I've gotten a letter asking me to support you, and naturally, I will. And so I thought, what better day is it today than to bring my check and do it right here? And I'd like to give it to the coach. This is my check, my contribution. So thank you. Thank y'all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate y'all being here. Thanks, Coach. Did I get most of the names right? Good deal. Glad to do it.
Coach, catch.
Coach, she probably would be the same one. Same one.
Flashback. Fiance.
Just got love.
Well, I didn't even put you in, and I didn't even get on without you.
No. He's our right hand.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, under our public comments, next, we have Central Mississippi Regional Library System, Ms. Pope. Mara Pope. Come forward.
Good morning. I would like to introduce Morgan Lee. She is our spokesperson for today, and then I will wrap it up at the end to tell y'all about some exciting news that happened to us recently.
Hello. Thank you for seeing us this morning. We're really happy to be here. My name is Morgan Lee, and I'm the representative for the Pearl Library. I'm going to introduce the rest of these guys as they make their way up. This is Kimberly Cook, our branch coordinator. This is Nora Anderson from Brandon. We have Jessica Ward from Sandhill. Tina Moni from Pelehachi. Dwayne Helms from Richland. Jill Hodges from Florence. Nicholas Parker from Reservoir. Regina Hudson from Puckett. And David Muse from Flowood. So thank you for having us this morning. We're really excited to be here. We wanted to thank you guys for all the support that you have given us over this past year. We've really done a lot of great things in our library, as Mara will expound on later, but we wanted to invite you guys to all of our National Library Events coming up. National Library Week is April 7th through 13th. We have a lot of fun stuff going on. At the Pearl Library, we are hosting our first-ever Comic-Con that's been in our system, but it's put on by all of Rankin County. So it's going to be at the Pearl Library, but all of these guys behind me have done tremendous amounts of work to make it a really fun event. For those of you that don't know, a Comic-Con is basically a celebration of any type of fandom, any TV show, any book series. So if we've got some Game of Thrones fans, anything like that, we're hoping that people will come dressed up to the event, but it's going to be a lot of fun. We're having a lot of trivia contests, a lot of video game contests, so anything like that. It's going to be from 10:00 to 5:00 on Saturday at the Pearl Library, April 13th. So thank you all for your support this year.
Okay. Well, if you would just entertain me, I'm going to read you a little press release. The Mississippi Library Commission, which is a state agency, recently named 12 public library systems as Mississippi Library Stars for fiscal year 2017. The concept of Library Stars comes from the National Professional Magazine, The Library Journal. The publication separates library systems into categories by expenditures that they report on the annual public library statistics report that is submitted to the Institute for Museum and Library Services. The star ratings are then calculated by comparing libraries in the following areas. Mississippi measures an amalgamation of statistics on interlibrary loans, statewide database use, number of registered users, and items withdrawn; two, circulation per capita; three, total program attendance per capita; and four, public internet terminal uses per capita. While Mississippi does not currently have any National Library Journal Stars, MLC has awarded Mississippi Library Stars to the best-scoring libraries in the state, recognizing the three highest-scoring library systems in each of the four categories. Mississippi Library Stars are awarded to the following libraries for their performance in fiscal year '27. So we are in the largest one, which is Level 4, with a million, over a million-dollar expenditure, and we are in the company of the Library of Hattiesburg, Petal, and Forest County, Jackson George Regional, and then Central Miss, which covers Rankin, Scott, Simpson, and Smith Counties. Now, this to say, this is your award, too, and that's what we want to do, is have a picture with you, because our library system, out of the 50-plus that we have in the state, is one of the top. And when I first started as a director, I think I made a promise to some of the more tenured members that we were going to be the best. And right now, we're at number three, because Hattiesburg is at the top, and then Jackson George. But I want to keep on propelling us forward to giving y'all the best services in your community. And so this is as much our award as it is your award, and we'd love to have a picture with you if that's okay.
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
How are y'all?
Good morning.
Squeeze in.
Squeeze in.
Pretend that you mind us.
Good job. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate you. Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good save.
Thank you specially. And we also have some goodies for you to enjoy so that you can get through the day.
We won't be seeing you in April, because I have to meet with another group that time.
Let's keep this a secret, and I'll give it to my wife.
As a present.
Tell him he's working.
He ain't kidding.
I'm like you, man.
All right, let's proceed. Under public comments, we have an addition to our list. Willie Kelly, come forward, sir. You've been here about three times and hadn't gotten to do much, so...
Thank you so much. Mr. Gaines and my brothers up here, and everybody, I just, I'm excited about this thing. I've been working on a project for three years.
Let me tell, it's Freedom Trail. He'll tell you more about it, but anyhow, it's a project that...
Yes, sir. In 2011, the legislature proclamated the Freedom Trail Mississippi, and so far, it haven't came to Rankin County, but we have such a rich history in civil rights in Rankin County that I feel like, along with some of the businesses that I talk to along 471, that we need to get the trail for business purposes and for educational purposes in Rankin County. I'd like to invite you guys out to Truvine, Missionary Baptist Church, on the 14th of March, 6 o'clock. We will have the business guys there and some of the leaders in the community, and we will want to form a steering committee, because I want this to be a community project, not something that somebody just come up with and gripe or complain, but I come to you guys with answers, excitement, and ready work.
Thank you, sir. Can you say the date one more time?
It's March the 14th, at 6:00 p.m. at Truvine Missionary Baptist Church. That's on 471.
Thank you so much.
You guys are welcome to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I might just surprise you, get us on our cut. All right, is that, that's it for public comments? All right. Do we have any old business that we need to discuss?
Make a motion to approve February 15th minutes.
All right. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. A little slow.
Anybody against it? No, and motion passes. I didn't ask for any discussion, but I assume there is none for that.
I would jump in.
All right, let's move on. Our consent agenda, has everybody had a chance to look at that and have any questions?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve, and Jared seconded it. Any discussion? All for it?
Aye.
Any against? No, and motion passes. All right, Ms. Judy, you're next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm requesting authority to pay registration fees in the amount of $250 each to send Deana Shepherd and Teresa Born, deputy collectors, to the Collector of Revenue 1 class, March 25th, 29, and they will need reimbursement for mileage.
So move. Jared. Second. Have a motion from Daniel, second, by Jay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. John Sullivan.
Rankler 2 Adams, petition changed the assessment of 2018 real and personal property assessment.
Second.
All right, motion Bob Morrow, second. Jared. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'll be authoritative to publish the home state exemption public notice deadline for March 20th.
Second.
I even have a motion from Morrow, second. Jared. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Bridget, come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have one item this morning, and it's time to renew the vending contract with Coombs Distributors for a period of 12 months.
Motion approved.
All right, Chad makes a motion to approve it. Bob, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, Ms. Judy, you're next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm requesting authority to pay registration fees in the amount of $250 each to send Deana Shepherd and Teresa Born, deputy collectors, to the Collector of Revenue 1 class, March 25th, 29, and they will need reimbursement for mileage.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion from Daniel, second, by Jay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. John Sullivan.
Rankler 2 Adams, petition changed the assessment of 2018 real and personal property assessment.
Second.
All right, motion Bob Morrow, second. Jared. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'll be authoritative to publish the home state exemption public notice deadline for March 20th.
Second.
I even have a motion from Morrow, second. Jared. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'll be authoritative to publish the home state exemption public notice deadline for March 20th.
Second.
I even have a motion from Morrow, second. Jared. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Bridget, come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have one item this morning, and it's time to renew the vending contract with Coombs Distributors for a period of 12 months.
Motion approved.
All right, Chad makes a motion to approve it. Bob, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I want to take B, C, and D to cease fire utility permits is one.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Daniel, second. Bob, I would like to say something.
Go ahead.
I've got several places that they're working, and I get so many complaints. I know it's been wet, and that's one thing, but we have, I think we've gotten around them, and they're not working after dark much anymore, but they're so close to some of these people's houses that it's almost an invasion. I mean, there's a lot of people working in places like Reservoir East. We just need to keep a close eye on them, and I've talked to you, and I know you know about it.
Yes, sir, and I'm actually setting up a meeting with that contractor to handle some of those issues.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Oh, I've got one thing, I might have to get Craig to help me with this, but anyway, I want to add just one thing to additional business. We ordered some trucks the other day. They come in wrong. They was on state contract. We're going to return them. We just want to get it on the record that we're returning these vehicles and go reorder the right trucks.
Do you take action on it?
Should we add that to the agenda? Yeah, so it's really just a courtesy notification to you guys, since it's a state contract issue. I don't really think that there's any discretionary part of this that you guys to speak on, but we just wanted to make sure you were aware of the situations. Two trucks, the engines were spec'd under the state contract. When the truck showed up, the engines were not the engine, engines that were spec'd for the unit. So they're going back.
How long will it be before we get to the others?
It'll be another probably eight, 10 weeks.
Wedges it is, it may not hurt us.
Good grief. Yes, that's really just a courtesy notification to you guys, so we just wanted you to acknowledge that we got two trucks in, we're canceling the PO, trucks are going back, they got to get us the right units.
Because they're small trucks.
Pickups, yes, sir.
Oh, pickup.
One-ton pickups, yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
So you need action on this?
No, we just, I just wanted to add it to the agenda, so it was on the record.
We want a record of it, why we did what we did.
I'll second Bob's addition.
All right, you have, you have anything else, Mike? I thought we talked about something.
Well, I do. Y'all through with that. I'm going to hand out one thing right here to y'all.
Need to vote on this? No, we don't.
This is just reading material for y'all, it's something we've done a study on. I've been working on the K and S. Not looking for a lot of action, nothing on this, just look at all.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
This has been discussed, I guess, for about a year, and we've told Mike to get us more information and things like that, and they've actually had some idea, I don't know how the sheriff accomplished it, but a row of these type lights put in to see what it would look like, and it does brighten it up. But right now, with our budget and everything, I think we just need to learn right now about what it'll do and maybe save money.
Right, it's, it's got your energy saving breakdown on it, and then also, we've got energy of being next week or two to confirm those figures. They're sending out an engineer to confirm those figures, and we'll talk about this at a later date.
Do we have any kind of timings on these lights? Because sometimes they're going by at night, and there's no activity up there, but that may be lit up, you know?
We do have timers on them, Mr. Bob. We run them to, we run a certain amount of lights to 9:00 at night, just enough to see in the arena. We don't run them all, but just with us increasing our shows like we have, we've seen a big increase in our electric bill, and it's just because we're running lights more. We've got bigger shows, we're running more lights than what we normally did, so we started researching this a couple of years, about a year ago. Finally got some data back from these LED companies, and then we got an energy company in. They're sending the engineer in, and they'll confirm those figures right there. So once I get those figures confirmed, I'll be able to give you that analysis to make sure that their, their numbers are correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Parker.
Did I miss the bid opening on this one?
Last Friday. Last Friday.
No, two Fridays ago.
As far as the meeting is concerned, we had to present this to the board. Go ahead, Mr. Parker, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I have three items on the agenda, gentlemen. First one, we recommend an award of the Mill Creek Subdivision Drainage Improvement Project to Utility Constructors, Inc., in the amount of $566,370.
Yeah, I'll make that motion to approve.
Second. All right, we have a motion from Daniel, I second myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Any against?
Mr. Bush, I want to ask one thing, though, on that. Once we, since we've got the project awarded now at this point, could you, in the, I guess the drawings of everything, email me a description or a visual description of where all the work's going to begin and start and plan, once we get all that in hand?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And your approximate start timeframe from these guys here, just, you got a ballpark in your head?
No, not at this moment.
Okay, so the next step, just for the people in Mill Creek will be what? The next step is what? We've awarded the bid, right?
That's right, the contract documents.
Correct.
Bonds and so forth have to be cleared out, and then we'll have, you know, pre-construction conference.
Pre-construction conference is next.
And then we'll issue the notice to proceed.
Perfect. Okay, so ballpark timeframe beginning, would you think? 60 days, 45 days, 30 days?
Probably 45 days.
Ballpark, okay.
Probably good.
I think it's set up as a 45-day contract date.
Okay. Are you ready to go in 45 days?
The contract has 90 days, so we're probably in the neighborhood of 45 days on notice to proceed, and then they got 90 days to complete.
Yep.
So well in advance of our deadline.
And just once we get through that pre-construction conference, if I could get maybe an email of the rendering of kind of where we start, where we're beginning, on paper, where I can just visualize. I know you've got all the words and the descriptions where you want to go, but my mind's kind of shallow, that you can just give me some pictures?
Yes, sir, we'd be happy to get that.
If I can piece myself through it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. The second item on the agenda is approval of preliminary plat for Fallen Oaks Phase 2.
Make a motion, we approve that.
Second. I take it that's the Mr. Gaines's district?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
It's a development right off 25 North. It's a really nice development.
Nice development.
Take a picture of it. All right, yeah, I make a motion. Daniel, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any other discussion? Pass, motion passes, and let's move to the next one.
Okay, the next one.
This is the next one.
It's on Fallen Oaks 2. It's Fallen Oaks Phase 3, the preliminary plat.
But they're so close to some of these people's houses that it's almost, uh, an invasion. I mean, there's a lot of people working in places like Reservoir East. We just need to keep a close eye on them. And I've talked to you and I know you know about it.
Yes, sir. And I'm actually setting up a meeting with that contractor to have some of those issues.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Most passes.
Oh, I got one thing, uh, might have to get Craig to help me with this, but anyway, I want to add this one thing to additional business. We ordered some trucks the other day. They come in wrong. They was on state contract. Uh, we're gonna return them. We just want to get it on the record, uh, that we're returning these vehicles and go reorder the right trucks.
Do you take action on it?
Should we add that to the agenda?
Yeah, so we're, it's really just a courtesy notification to you guys. Since it's a state contract issue, I don't really think that there's any discretionary part of this for you guys to speak on, but we just wanted to make sure you were aware of the situations. Two trucks. The engines were spec'd under the state contract. When the trucks showed up, the engines were not the engine, engines that were spec'd for the unit. So they're going back.
Mm-hmm. How long will it be before we get to the others?
Uh, be another probably eight, 10 weeks.
Wedges it is, it may not hurt us. Couldn't agree.
Yes, that's really just a courtesy notification to you guys. So we just wanted you to acknowledge that we got two trucks in. We're canceling the P.O. Trucks are going back. They gotta get us the right units.
Those are small trucks.
Uh, pickups, yes, sir.
Oh, pickup.
One-ton pickups, yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
So do you need action on that?
No, we just, I just wanted to add it to the agenda, so it was on the record.
We wanted a record of it, why we did what we did.
I'll second Bob's addition.
All right. You have, you have anything else, Mike? I thought we talked about something.
Well, I, I do. Y'all through with that. I'm gonna hand out one thing right here to y'all.
Need to vote on that? No, we don't.
This is just reading material for y'all, or something we've done to study on. I've been working on the K-N-H. Not looking for action or nothing on this, just look at all.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
This has been discussed, I guess, for about a year. And we've told Mike to get us more information and things like that. And they've actually had some idea, I don't know how the sheriff accomplished it, but a row of these type lights put in to see what it would look like. And it does brighten it up. But right now with our budget and everything, I think we just need to learn right now about what it'll do and maybe save money.
Right. It's, it's got your energy saving breakdown on it. And then also we've got energy of being next week or two to confirm those figures. They're sending out an engineer to confirm those figures, and we'll talk about this at a later date.
Well, we, do we have any kind of timings on these lights? Because sometimes they're going by at night and there's no activity up there, but that baby's lit up, you know?
We, we do have timers on them, Mr. Bob. We run them to, we run a certain amount of lights to nine o'clock at night. Just enough to see in the rain. We don't run them all. But, uh, just with us increasing our shows like we have, we've seen a big increase in our electric bill. And it's just because we're running lights more. We got bigger shows, we're running more lights uh, than what we normally did. So we started researching this, uh, couple of years, about a year ago. Finally got some data back from these LED companies and, uh, then we got an energy company in. They're sending the engineer in and they'll confirm those figures right there. So once I get those figures confirmed, I'll be able to give you that analysis to make sure that their, their numbers are correct.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Parker.
Did I miss the bid opening on this one?
Last Friday. Last Friday?
No, two Fridays yet.
As far as the meeting is concerned, we had to present this to the board. Go ahead, Mr. Parker, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. I have three items on the agenda, gentlemen. First one, we recommend an award of the Mill Creek subdivision drainage improvement project to Utility Constructors, Inc., in the amount of five hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars.
Okay. Yeah, I'll make that motion to approve.
Second. All right. We have a motion, Daniel. I second myself. All in favor? Any hints?
Hey, Mr. Bush, I want to ask one thing, though, on that. Um, once we, since we've got the project awarded now at this point, could you, uh, in the, I guess, the drawings of everything, email me a description or a visual description of where all the work's gonna begin and start and plan, once we get all that in hand?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And your approximate start timeframe from these guys here, just, uh, you got a ballpark in your head?
No, not at this moment.
Okay, so the next step, just for the people in Mill Creek will be what? The next step is what? We've awarded the bid.
That's right. The contract documents.
Correct.
Bonds and so forth have to be cleared out, and then we'll have, you know, pre-construction conference.
Pre-construction conference is next.
And, and then we'll issue the notice to proceed.
Perfect. Okay, so ballpark timeframe beginning, would you think? Sixty days, forty-five days, thirty days?
Probably forty-five days.
Ballpark, okay.
Yes, sir.
Probably good.
I think it's set up as a forty-five day contract date.
Okay. Are you ready to go in forty-five days?
The contract has ninety days. So we're, we're probably in the neighborhood of forty-five days on notice to proceed, and then they got ninety days to complete.
Yep.
So well in advance of our deadline.
And just once we get through that, uh, pre-construction conference, if I could get maybe an email of the rendering of kind of where we start, where we're beginning, on paper, where I can just view, I know you got all the words and the descriptions where you want to go, but my mind's kind of shallow, that you can just give me some pictures.
Yes, sir. We'll be happy to get that.
If I can piece myself through it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, the second item on the agenda, uh, is approval of preliminary plat for Fallen Oaks Phase Two.
Make a motion, we approve that. Second.
I take it that's in Mr. Gaines's district?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
It's, uh, it's, it's a development right off Twenty-Five North. It's a really nice.
Nice development.
It's, uh, take a picture of it. All right, yeah, I make a motion. Daniel second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any other discussion? Pass, motion passes. Let's move to the next one.
Okay, the next one.
This next one's.
It's on Fallen Oak Two. It's Fallen Oak Phase Three, the preliminary plat. We're recommending approval of that preliminary plat this time.
All right. Do I hear a motion for this?
Yep.
Daniel makes a motion. Jared seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None, any discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I make a motion. We take under Mr. Schleiz section A, B, and C together.
Okay.
Hey, let me, let me ask one question on, on A, just for a second. Uh, I, I know I've got to go out and do some more research. I, I've talked to several people in the area, but I've got a lot more to hit. Is there any way we can put the fifteenth, that hearing off for another, I guess, maybe the planning commission manual? Is there a timeframe on that? The fifteenth's kind of quick when we talking to everybody.
It's, it's been advertised for the.
So we gotta go on the fifteenth either way.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Uh, or, obviously, we can reset that, Daniel, at your, at your discretion, but we're gonna have to re-advertise it.
Okay.
So i- if, if you feel strongly enough about it and understanding that that's gonna require some additional expense on our side, that we really can't charge back to the applicant.
Right.
So.
Just, just drive on like it is. I'll try to make it work.
All right. All right. So, Mr. Morrow. Okay.
A, B, and C together, I'll second.
These are all three together?
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, Bob makes a motion, Daniel second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, item D is a public hearing on the J.M. Saret Properties LLC rezoning request. This is a Barker Road property. It's a District Four property. Mr. Saret is seeking to rezone eighty acres of a one hundred and forty-acre parcel from A2 to RE1. The property is located on the south side of Barker Road. The eighty acres has been divided into four parcels. Two of the parcels have been sold. The zoning does not allow for development in our ag zone. The property owners of these four lots will be required to sign a set of restrictive covenants stating that the lots cannot be further subdivided without the board supervisor's authority, and the remaining sixty acres to the south will remain A2. So at this time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Justin Saret rezoning request. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. At this time, we'll close that public hearing. It'd be appropriate to take action.
I make a motion, we approve it.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by myself, second by Jay. Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Passes.
Mr. President, item E is a public hearing for the Michael and Sarah Skaggs conditional use permit, Barker Road, District Four. This is the, this is actually one of the parcels of the four that we just discussed with respect to the zoning matter. Uh, Mr. and Ms. Skaggs are seeking a conditional use permit to construct a three thousand square foot metal building with living quarters and a shop on Barker Road. They purchased parcel three of the property that is being, that has been rezoned from A2 to R1 by Mr. Saret. The metal building homes are not allowed in the RE1 zone. Access to the home will be from the private drive that runs on the east side of the property. At this time, we'll open that hearing, and I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Michael and Sarah Skaggs conditional u- use permit request. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. Uh, Ms. Renee, are there any conditions that we need to discuss with the board on this particular request?
No, we.
We've seen the rendering.
Yeah. Turn your microphone on. Renee, well, you don't have to.
We've seen the renderings. Uh, this is actually, uh, when you hear metal building, sometimes you have ideas about what that looks like. This, this is a house.
One thing that wasn't included is that won't be visible from Barker Road.
And I wish it was. It's a good-looking building.
Right.
And it, uh, it's certainly another option when way in the rural areas of the county, and I think it's good.
Yes.
I make a motion, we approve it.
Second.
All right.
Some of his voters, you know, he's kind of boring.
I don't know.
It's a good-looking building. He's right. It's, it's gonna work out fine.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
For the record, I want to make sure that that public hearing is closed. I was waiting.
Yeah.
You slipping. Okay. Item F, Mr. President, is a public hearing on the Aaron Welborn conditional use permit, One Forty-Five Bella Floor Drive. This is District One property. Uh, Aaron Welborn is seeking a conditional use permit to construct an eighteen hundred square foot metal building.
There was no motion on item E as far as who made the motion and who seconded. Who seconded?
I need to wake up over there.
Just put one of us down.
Jared and Bob both seconded, both of them guys, too.
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Schleiz.
Okay.
They keep it straight over there, just.
Did y'all vote on?
Well.
Yeah.
We need that.
Very good.
Don't think I'm trying to run something by you?
We're back on the welphords here.
Okay, we're, we're ready to go. All right, let me start over. Mr. Welborn is seeking a conditional use permit to construct an eighteen hundred square foot metal building with living quarters and a shop on Bella Floor Drive. The front of the building will be hardy board siding, and the sides and rear are, uh, will be metal. It's a ten-acre parcel zoned RE1. Metal building homes are not allowed in the RE1 district. Mr. Welborn obtained signatures from neighbors saying that they are not opposed to metal str- structure, and the building will not be visible from Bella Floor Drive. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Aaron Welborn conditional use permit. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition. So we'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
I make a motion to approve. I've also followed up, and he's with, uh, different ones, and they're, everybody's fine with it.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion from Jared to approve.
Got that.
I just want to, Mr. President, real quick, just want to reemphasize what I said on Thursday. This is becoming more prevalent from an architectural standpoint. You take a little bit harder look at it, even if trees are gonna cover it, because trees can disappear, you know, because down the road, we're going end up with a whole bunch of these things. And that's great, great in childhood, but some thought needs to be going up just, just another metal building.
Yeah, I thought about it, too, but I think we could deal with it just like we do currently whenever someone comes in, want to build a house.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, I was giving the building department just some guidance here that, yeah.
But conditional uses are looked at on a case-by-case or a site-by-site visit to see, you know.
What's compatible with the neighborhood out there, too.
That's right, and you could set conditions on them, you know.
Yeah, most of the ones that I've, that, that I've had in my area are really, there's nothing around them, and probably won't be where they're built. But I, yeah, I think case-by-case, like you said, would be important.
So we, uh, you know, the, the, the longer that we get into both zoning, uh, and, uh, the requirements of zoning, and the way that our zoning department and our addressing department now work so closely together on things, what we're seeing is uh, uh, much less of a situation where something's coming out of the ground before we know about it.
Right.
And so that gives us, uh, the, the seat at the table that we need to address conditions or other issues, especially with respect to aesthetics for various communities. It gives us a chance to address those before we get the horse out of the barn.
I, I would like for us to be able to look at these case-by-case, but if they're more than ten acres, I don't understand why we have to rezone them out of agriculture.
Yes, sir.
Because if somebody owns ten acres, more than likely, they want it for an agricultural purpose.
Yes, sir.
And, and that. This wasn't agriculture. This was, this was rezoned residential.
The one I have, I've got four more, or three more of these that's similar that, you know, we're having to bring them out of agriculture. I hit the whole deal, and, and going right back in agriculture, really.
I mean, if it's just one house, we shouldn't have to have a conditional use?
If it's rezoned residential.
Oh, you're rezoning, okay.
That's what I'm saying.
I thought you were saying they were agriculture.
Jay, the problem is you've got subdividing activity.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I thought he meant agriculture.
No, no. It's just, I mean, if they have a large tract that's like, this is one that started off being, I don't know.
Oh, so you're really saying they shouldn't have to rezone them?
We should be able to leave them as, I think, as agriculture, and then handle them as agriculture, uh, because they're gonna go right back and put horses or cow or show cattle or something, the reason.
Let's, let's not.
But anyhow, that's another, that's another day.
Once you start through the, it's, it's a moving target. It becomes a moving target, and there's no way to get around that, by the way. But once we start seeing areas that are rural move to residential, then without the rezoning, the people who actually build in those areas as residential cannot be protected in the event you leave it as ag. Okay, so once these, once you start the residential context, then you've got the other uses that would be permitted and allowed in an area that is starting to move towards residential. So it's really a chicken or an egg deal for you guys. You gotta decide, do we want to just allow it to go residential without the protections of residential in your zoning? Or do we want to go ahead and rezone, so that there's some protections there?
If we don't make them do it, if it's agriculture date or, or left RE1A, they can all put trailers out.
That's the point.
Okay, let's move on.
That's the point. We can't lose sight of that fact. It's, this is.
Well, I understand.
RE1A, they still have to come in.
It's a conditional, it's a conditional use there, Jared. It's a conditional use.
I know you have a conditional use.
You do have a place at the table.
Yeah. You, I mean, you still have to bring it in here, right?
So where we are.
We had motion.
Motion.
Second. I mean, we'd have some discussion. Do we have any other discussion? All right. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, item G is the, is the public hearing for the MC Trailer Sales Conditional Use Permit, Forty-One Thirty-Six Highway Four Seventy-One. This is District Two. Uh, MC Trailer Sales LLC is seeking a conditional use permit to operate a retail utility trailer and part sales business, that threw me there, uh, in an existing building at Forty-One Thirty-Six Highway Four Seventy-One. This property is located on the southeast corner of Highway Four Seventy-One and Highway Forty-Three at that intersection. It's a four-point-one-five acre parcel that is Zone C Two. The applicant is proposing hours of operation Monday through Friday, nine a.m. to five p.m., Saturday, nine a.m. to three p.m. Trailers will be stored inside the existing chain link fence to the rear of the building. The application states that a maximum, a maximum of eighty trailers will be on site. Okay, so we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the MC Trailer Sales Conditional Use Permit, Forty-One Thirty-Six Highway Four Seventy-One. Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. At this time, we'll close the public hearing. It'd be appropriate to take action.
Mr. Cross, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
What's the difference? I see same address. It's the one we set for the public hearing on the fifteenth in this. Is that been a parcel or two options going on within one parcel?
Yeah, it's kind of, the main thing on item G, Ms. Renee, correct me if I'm wrong, this is kind of cleaning up what's already taking place right now. We already have trailers and all being stored at that location.
That's right.
So basically what we're doing now is allowing it to continue on the way that is. The one up above it, item, whatever item that was, item A is creating a service station-type gas station in that general area. So it's two different areas. So this right here is just a, kind of cleaning up what's already existing, allowing it to be able to store the trailers out of there. The guys have done a great job, well, the people have done a great job in keeping that area nice, right there where the trailers are existing at this point. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. I have a motion, Daniel, second by Jay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Passes.
Mr. President, item H is a bid opening for portable classrooms. These were offered by the sheriff. It's done by public here, I'm sorry, by, uh, public notice. We have one bid response from Todd Means that has been returned uh, in response to the offering of the portable classrooms for sale as surplus. I'm gonna open that bid before the board. Uh, the bid is for two hundred and fifty dollars each or five hundred dollars total, uh, for both of portable classrooms. Those are serial numbers five thirty-eight, three four oh one, and five thirty-eight, three four oh two, and those are currently in possession of the sheriff.
I mean, he comes, picks them up, though, right?
Yes, sir. The, the bid notice actually required that in exchange for bidding on them, there had to be an agreement that the, uh, portable classrooms would be removed at the expense of the buyer.
Is he planning to set these up at his farm? Do you know if that, what is his plan for him, Brown, or is he gonna? He'll show up somewhere else in the county if we need to.
There are camps somewhere.
Yeah, well, that's fine, yeah.
We have a motion.
No, you don't.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Bob, second. Jared, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item I is the acknowledgement of receipt of a notice of recusal from four different pending justice court cases that were, that was filed by the Rankin County Attorney, Richard Wilson. And I'm asking, we're asking for authority of the justice court clerk to request appointment of Brendan Sartan, City of Pearl prosecutor, as a substitute county prosecutor for one of those justice court cases. And Bodie McDonald, who is the City of Richland prosecutor, as a substitute county prosecutor for three of the justice court cases. And authority of the county administrator to pay Brendan and Bodie for their services contingent upon the negotiations of the amount that is to be paid. So we'll get that information for you.
So you're just trying to make justice information purposes? We're not approving anything, right?
That's correct. Well, this is actually approving the replacement of these two for those four cases, so that they can be set. We'll get word to you about the amount that is going to be paid.
That's gonna come back before us.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll get that to you.
Brendan actually has filled in at the youth court, so it'd probably be that same rate that he's filled in at the youth court.
Right. Because of Richard's recusal, Bob, some are, Jay, did you ask because of Richard's recusal, both of his assistants are, they, they are conflicted as well.
All three of them.
That's correct.
All right.
The office of the county prosecutor is conflicted.
Okay.
So we're having to go outside.
Wow. Do we have a motion, somebody?
Well, I guess I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, I have, uh, two firsts, so I'll split it. Jay gets it this time. Bob second. Uh, any other discussion? All right. All in favor?
Uh, we'll get, we'll get word to you specifically on the amounts. We'll, we'll make sure that that's available to you, and we'll try to make sure that everybody's clear and comfortable on that. Okay, uh, Mr. President, if you don't mind, I've got one other item that I'd like to sneak on. Uh, so I would ask for a motion to add a discussion and potential authority, uh, to extend the contract with Sanborn. This is our, uh, uh, da- uh, photographic data, county data, mapping, uh, this, the aerial photography component of that. I need to discuss that with you. I'd like for that.
Make a motion, yeah, a motion to add, I guess?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, Daniel to add it, second by Jay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So what has happened is that, uh, thi- this is an agreement. Uh, we are in an inter-local agreement that the board has already authorized with ten other counties, ta- uh, tax assessors in other counties for the aerial photography, the flying and the digital mapping of the, of respective counties for the purposes of tax parcels and, uh, boundary lines and all the other things that are important to the tax assessor's work. Uh, what has happened is that, uh, we are just simply among ten other counties, and we are in line to have that photography flown. And the board has already authorized the flying of the photography for twenty nineteen. And what has happened is the weather has been terrible. And so the work that has been done to date is woefully way behind on the other counties, and they haven't gotten to Rankin County yet. If we don't get in front of this, then by the time they get to Rankin County, all the foliage will be out, and our photography will not be useful to us. And so we are asking the board to allow for an extension of the agreement contingent upon the price being held until earlier than this time next year, where we will be a pro- a higher priority on the list.
Aye.
They'll be able to get to us, and hopefully the weather will cooperate, and we'll find that our photography is much better. Uh, I've talked to the assessor. We believe that it's appropriate to extend this as long as we can keep that pricing, and so that'll be the contingency. Uh, we will extend it, and we won't hold them to it if they can keep the pricing for twenty twenty.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve by Bob, second by Jay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
We, we've got some things, a couple of things we want to talk to you about in executive, one of, uh, one of them being, uh, with respect to a couple of our road projects, right-of-way acquisitions. So our right-of-way guys are here. I just wanted to alert them and you that we'll call on them at the appropriate time.
Good. All right. Ms. Wanda Martin?
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, the new Rankin County misdemeanor facility, we're asking for approval of pay application number thirteen to Flagstar Construction Company in the amount of three hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents, and authority to issue that check. Flagstar has requested two additional days to add to their contract due to rain greater than the amount of one-tenth of an inch. Therefore, we are recommending two additional days for this.
Motion to approve.
Tenth of an inch?
All right. We have a motion by Bob, second by Daniel. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I say one thing.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Just want to say, welcome aboard, Wanda.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hope, hope that all runs well.
Thank you so much.
I don't have a problem with it. I'm just curious, this, this greater than tenth of an inch, is that some kind of standard, uh?
It's probably in the contract.
Request.
To get a rain.
A sprinkle.
Is it point one?
Yeah.
That, that's not.
I didn't know that we could get a request for extension of less than thirty days, so I'm happy to see two days.
Yeah, yeah, I just think it's funny, a tenth of an inch, that's a sprinkle.
Well, it says greater than a tenth, Jared, greater. It's gotta be one-one.
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. Um, the next item, new Rankin County courthouse facilities, approval of pay application number twenty to Chris Albritton Construction Company in the amount of seven hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-one cents, and authority to issue that check. Chris Albritton has requested five additional days due to adverse weather conditions, and it is J.H. and H.'s opinion that the contractor is entitled to these additional days as specified in the contract.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Jay, second by Bob. Any other discussion?
Hold on, it's been five days. Man, they just keep asking, asking, asking.
Okay, it does keep raining.
I know it does keep raining, but, man, they've missed a lot of days.
Well, apparently, it's legitimate in the contract. I mean, you know, and what they've qualified for. I mean, right, Mr. Parker?
I don't think we give them days before this.
I don't want you to.
Only, only other thing was that dig out.
Yeah, that's the first time we've ever given them any days.
Oh, we gave some days way back.
Well, we gave them some days in exchange for reduction in the contract price, as you recall. We gave them, on the front end, we gave them, I think it's five hundred days instead of what it was gonna be, and they gave us a credit back, so we gave the days, but they gave money back, so it was a nice even swap.
But I'm okay, but they can just, they can keep watching, because I, I, I mean, I'm leery.
And we can just coordinate to see that the new board with the ground, I mean, with real estate.
Yeah. Okay.
You're saying you don't want to be part of it?
Well, no, it's just way it's gonna work out. Oh, I definitely want to be part of it.
I know.
We'll get comfortable in that.
All right.
Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Motion passes.
I guess Mr. Word's...
I don't believe I saw it on here.
Come on in.
Here we go.
Good morning, Mr. President. Time is coming for us to renew our contract with Baron Threatenet. That's our weather service that we use. This is a, it's a budgeted item. We stuck it in there last year. Just to remind you, we renegotiated this contract about a year ago, went from $1,200 down to $780. And if you, if you go ahead and approve this today, that's gonna be a substantial savings over the past two years of over $840. So this is just time to renew the contract. And again, it was a budgeted, so.
Jay makes a motion to approve.
Second.
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say Jared.
I'll beat you to that.
All right, Jay makes a motion, Jared second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mike Harrison again.
I'm gonna lean on Craig right here. I know my name's on it, but, uh...
You get it started, and let's see what happens.
All right. Well, we talked, and it's time to start talking about our pavement preservation and our projects where we're gonna be at, which direction we need to go for our budget and stuff like that.
Y'all talking about the hospital doing a bond? Is that what this is? Could be. If y'all want to talk about that, totally up to y'all. I thought that there was gonna be some, uh, some materials to go along with this. I don't remember the breakdown mentally.
Are we talking, are we talking about Dale here?
I think if we, my opinion would be that we, if you want to discuss things and have some discussion, but I'd like to have it on the agenda and not add on. I mean, I'd rather be out there bold with what we're doing.
Why don't we do this, then? Let's look at what is the information that you guys would like to have before you so that at the time that it shows up on the agenda, you feel like you've got enough information to start, you know, start a conversation that would make sense to you?
Or at least need the printout that we're, you know, projects that we're looking at.
So a, the same printout that has the road projects that we can look at? All right, we'll make sure that that's available to you. I think it would be appropriate for you guys to at least talk about the civil link material that has been put together and start looking through that documentation and evaluating what, if anything, that report is telling you with respect to, you know, their recommendation on how you go forward with preservation techniques and other issues related to your roads and maintaining your roads. That information is now available. And so, you know, I think it'd be appropriate to have that discussion at the same time. Is there anything else that y'all can think of?
What was, what was your intent, Mike, on the pavement preservation aspect of this thing and the agenda? I see the projects, I get that. But what was your, what were you gonna try to head down on that part?
Well, we were just gonna talk about, do y'all want to include this civil link deal in your pavement preservation? You know, is what we're doing. We're trying to, we're just about to get all the information together on the five-year plan, Mr. Bob. More update on that that we should have had on the 15th.
And that five-year plan calls for...
What roads we need to be working on, which direction we need to be going. Basically grade it out from 1 to 10 on your roads and try to meet happy in the middle. And what I've looked at the plan is that, you know, of course, I've talked to some of y'all about it, and we've talked about it, but, you know, and what we want to do with the money is where we'll be at in five years, Mr. Bob.
Gotcha.
I think where Mike's really getting hurt at is, you know, he wants to be able to us agree that the roads he's gonna do is the roads we're gonna do, rather than come in and say, oh, I need this road done too. Well, if we do that, we just need to understand it's taking away some other project, you know? So we don't need to just keep adding on. Just understand if you want him to do something else, then something's gotta give.
Well, and the thing on these projects is that we've had this discussion back in December, and it's just kind of rolling back around again and for whatever reason, we put it off to this point. But there's more projects than we've got money for. So there's gonna have to be some identification of what projects are gonna be done, which ones are not.
Well, I think that's what the project...
If that's what y'all want to have discussion on today, then I'm ready to go whenever everybody else is. But I'm just saying that there's, there's gonna be, we can't do everything of the projects that's out there.
So not with our...
Not with the existing budget we got right now, and not without cutting the road department, which I don't want to do, and not without cutting other, we'll just say, locations on the same point. So when you're ready to have that discussion, I'm ready for whatever, but I'm not ready to take action or anything without some serious discussion on it.
I really think this is more discussion, but to your point, let's, if you feel like you need more information than we've seen up to this point, Jay, then the 15th's coming. So let's just get it together and have it in front of y'all, put it on the agenda, to Steve's point, so that we can, you know, clearly and adequately address everything that y'all feel like is...
Well, we never went over that list in detail anyway. Some of them projects, I don't even remember was discussed, and I know we might have voted for it before, but I didn't know there was quite the price tag going on with it, so.
I have all that.
Before you buy the 15th, Jay.
As far as the normal maintenance of our roads, I'm not talking about new projects. I'm talking about what we've got in this book. I would like to follow it as close as we, we pay the professionals to give us their opinion.
It's hard.
And I think we ought to take, take that. We may not be able to go 100% about it, but I'd sure like to make it a target.
Well, that's, that's my thing is, I mean, I've had, gave y'all the book. I know y'all have looked over it, and we're getting close to finalizing this five-year plan. I've tweaked it a little bit. I just wanted to make sure that y'all didn't have no input on the tweaking, you know, what we need to do to it, you know, before we finalize.
We did, um, a subdivision in my district.
Yes.
One of my only roads, you know, as y'all soon will say. You know, and I think we need to go back and revisit a couple of those roads in there.
Yes. And I know we reached out and did some stuff last year that was borderline, Jake, you know? And I mean, I knew it going into it. But, you know, I've got to look at, you know, if we took care of three or four miles...
We're improving our process?
We're trying to improve our process of on the front end of it, fixing some base failures that I've seen has come through that we missed on the front end.
We're already blowing a million and a half of Mr. Bishop's district anyway, and I think we can kind of move on past that.
A million and a half? I would love to get a million and a half. What are you talking about? Man, I'd be great if I sniffed 500,000.
All right, let's move on.
Bishop's saying with a straight face.
That is just wrong.
Jay seems to be stuck on roads.
Okay, yeah. All right.
Craig, you don't need to be...
Yeah, I'm out. I'm just kidding you.
Anything else, Mike?
No, that's it. I just kind of wanted to update y'all.
So the plan is at when? The 15th?
March 15th, we'll get y'all some more information, have everything printed off for y'all at that time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, if I may, improve with one additional item under additional business for your consideration. This would have been on the agenda had we had an opportunity to know that it should be on the agenda in a timely manner. It's just a byproduct of the circumstances. We have a vacancy that I would like for this board to consider declaring in a county district office. A justice court judge announced his resignation from office prior to last Friday, which was the qualifying deadline. And as a part of his announcement, which was made to the Rankin County Bar Association, indicating that there would be a vacancy in the Justice Court District 2 office, he indicated that he intended to qualify for a nonjudicial office. And so unfortunately, that put us in a position at our work session meeting last Thursday where we had to wait until the next day to see whether or not he was actually going to qualify for a nonjudicial office. He did, in fact, qualify for the nonjudicial office, and as a result, we are now in position to be able to declare the vacancy in his current office, which is Justice Court District 2. And so I would, I would encourage you to go ahead and accept that acknowledgement of his declaration of seeking the nonjudicial office and declare, at least today, declare the vacancy in the Justice Court District 2 office.
Let's add it first.
I like that. Second.
Daniel makes a motion, Bob second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes to add it now.
So a motion to accept the resignation or vacancy?
To declare a vacancy in the Justice Court District 2.
Daniel makes a motion.
Second.
Bob seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, where that leaves us is this. Now there's a vacancy under 2315-839. This board has the authority, after declaring the vacancy in the county district office, to appoint someone to fulfill that unexpired term of the occupant who has resigned. And so, or for which the vacancy is established. So it would be incumbent upon you guys, I'm not asking you to do anything today unless you're prepared to, but it would be incumbent upon you guys